Valerie or Semi, can you promote me to a co-host?
Yes, I'll ask, this is Valerie. Alex is just promoting you right now.
All right, great, thank you.
Okay, we've got one minute to go. Places. And that's ready. Charles is ready. We have the two of us and John, so we've got three. Yep, mhm. I don't know if we have the other two supervisors. Yes, Supervisor Leho is here and Supervisor Lopez. That's okay, well, here we go, ready? Good afternoon, everyone. It is my pleasure to call to order the February 11th, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting for our special meeting of the Legislative Workshop. Could you call the role members?
Good afternoon, let the record reflect all supervisors are present with Supervisor Adams and Askew appearing in person and Supervisors Alejo, Lopez and Phillips appearing via video conference.
Thank you. Would all present please stand and rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, everyone. And now I would like to ask our Smash Interpreter, Diego Chal-. Thank you, everyone. And now I would like to ask our Smash Interpreter, Diego Celis, to please make the announcement.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Muchas gracias. And now it is my honor to welcome and thank the elected legislators who have joined us today for our Legislative Workshop. And in order, I'm thankful that we have Congressman Jimmy Panetta, Congresswoman Zoe Lofgren, who will be with us from 2:45 to 3 o'clock, Senator Ana Caballero, who will join at 3:15, Senator John Laird, who will be with us from 2 o'clock to 2:45, Assembly Member Mark Stone, Assembly Member Robert Rivas, Zach Vaden, representing Senator Diane Feinstein. I thank all of you so much for giving us your time today to help focus on the issues of greatest importance to the people of Monterey County. Now, it is my pleasure to hand off the internal part of our agenda and our activities today to my colleague, who is Chair of the Monterey County Board of Supervisors Legislative Committee, Supervisor Wendy Root-Askew. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Adams. I just want to again reiterate our thank you to everyone for joining us today. I know that everyone of our state and federal legislators have a busy, busy schedule, and we are just honored to be able to spend a little time with you. I'd like to quickly briefly introduce the county's Legislative Affairs Team. We have a phenomenal group that is working hard to elevate county issues with our state and federal decision-makers. Nick Chulos is our Assistant CAO. I see Nick here. Annette DiAdamo is our Legislative Coordinator, who really runs the legislative program on the county side. Ashley Walker is our State Legislative Advocate with NOSAM and LLP in Sacramento. And Brent Heberly is our Federal Legislative Advocate with Ballard Spar LLP in Washington DC. We spend a lot of time working very closely with these folks to make sure that Monterey County interests are well represented. Our workshop today will provide information on the county's highest priority issues and our legislative delegation's highest priorities related to Monterey County, and give us an opportunity to have some discussion about how we can best work together to achieve these goals and priorities. Our agenda today will include presentations from the county. We have some sponsor legislation that the county is working on, followed by five state budget requests. We'll have brief presentations on those. Then we'll welcome some brief remarks from our state and federal legislators. We'll try to accommodate everyone based on when they're available to join us. And then we will continue with opportunity for the Board of Supervisors to share brief remarks and thoughts with our legislators. We will engage in some discussion after that, and then move on to any direction that the Board of Supervisors would like to give to county staff moving forward. We'll round out the end of the workshop with public comment on issues that we've discussed, and then bring it back for adjournment. Let's see here. We do have a lot to cover in a two-hour workshop, so we will ask folks to try to keep their comments to three to five minutes, and we'll let you manage that, but we do need to, we do want to make sure that we hear from everyone today. With that, I will introduce our County Administrative Officer, Charles McKee. Do we have Charles? I see Charles right here. Okay, very good. I'll pass the microphone over to Charles McKee to get us kicked off with our county priority presentations and a brief state of the county.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, and I will take the virtual microphone from you. And as everybody, as a chairwoman just said, I'm Charles McKee, the County Administrative Officer. I do want to welcome all the members of the public who might be joining. We have, I think, maybe some mayors and city council persons. Obviously, our supervisors, our state legislators, and our federal representatives. And what I think this shows is having all of these leaders here and our community here is that we have an engaged county, and we have a collaborative county. It's a county that works together despite our political differences and despite some other differences, so that we can all come together for the best of our community. And what we're hoping here to get through today is some common approaches to moving forward to some of our legislative priorities. We are very fortunate, as I mentioned, is we have political leaders at every level, whether it's the school boards, our water districts, our council persons, our mayors, that come together with the County Board of Supervisors and with our representative to try to help. A classic example of this is recently the way that Santa Cruz County and Monterey County stood up and stood together to help the Watsonville Community Hospital. And we took the lead of our Senator, Senator John Laird, to see how we can help this vital part of our community. It might be a small part of Monterey as far as population, but it is an example of how we work together to try to help those who need our help, so that we can be stronger together. As far as our representatives here today, we know that it's going to be a challenge losing Senator Caballero, for example. You know, we'll have a little bit of overlap as we go forward, but we know that Senator Caballero is always going to have a part of Salinas in her and a part of Monterey County in her, and will help us out. We know that Senator Laird is a tireless advocate for us, and we look forward to continuing that relationship and trying to build on it. We know that Assembly Member Stone is always there with his passion, and we can call him up and say, "Can we get some help on this legislation?" And he'll be right there. And then Robert Rivas, Assembly Member Rivas, he has passion that we know we can tap into to get things done. And it's really nice to have those statewide representatives here. We have, I know, a great federal legislators, too. Congressman Panetta, his district may have changed and reshaped, but he will always represent Monterey County. I heard him on the news last night, and he made it clear that he's going to represent all of Monterey County regardless of what his district is or regardless of what he's doing in life. He's always going to be here helping us out. And I know we have the potential of adding Congresswoman Zoe Lofgren to Monterey County's legislative team, and that's going to be a real advantage if she comes through, which we expect come January. She will be able to connect Silicon Valley with the Salinas Valley, and looking through her years, looking through her years of service in the legislature and the Congress to help us out, I think is something that's going to benefit us all. And of course, we have the longstanding experience of Senator Feinstein and the fresh energy of Senator Padilla that we know is always there to help us when we want. Monterey County is lucky to have a legislative pool that is so deep, and we look forward to tapping into those attributes for success. As the County Administrative Officer, I'm very fortunate because I lead a very talented, dedicated county workforce, and I have a community here that I can lean on to get things done. And my tenure as the CAO has been a little bit tough because my tenure has been essentially the COVID years. And I know that sounds like a bad horror movie, but it has really been made better by joining together in these times of need to help serve our community. We've had it, we've had our essential workers in agriculture. We've had our businesses that cater to the needs of those people who need rest and relaxation, work during those times of trouble when others are at home potentially, doing their jobs remotely. We know people in our community are out there every day doing what's needed to make our county and our country stronger. The county's team today is going to explain some of those legislative wins we seek from you. As you know, the counties are arms of the state, and we do a tremendous amount, and it's really broad. We know that we're rich in diversity in many ways that make us Monterey County the envy of the world. But let me just talk about a few needs that we have here. We have broadband needs in our rural areas. We know that our kids and workers in the rural areas of, you know, need broadband to be successful going forward, and we're going to tap on that. We're going to tap on you to bring that help here to Monterey County. We know that we have some water infrastructure needs that we're going to look for your help with. We stood up a groundwater sustainability agency with collaboration here across our community, but we need your help to make those final pieces work, like the Interlake Tunnel and some of our dam modifications that we're going to ask for. We have housing needs, like a lot of places, and we have people who are homeless, those without houses right now, that we're going to look to the state and federal government to see if we can improve their lives. So today's presentation, you'll hear about a need for a Monterey County Veterans Home. This is an easy one, because we're going to help, we want to help those who stood up for us to help us all. We want you to help us make their lives better. The Interlake Tunnel and Spillway projects, as I mentioned, those are water storage projects because we are on our own here in Monterey County with water. We don't get state and federal water. We're trying to do it, we're trying to do what we need to make it to be resilient, to have water for our farms, help for our farm workers, and these are projects that are ready to go that we can move on. We want clean drinking water for our communities like San Lucas. We want to recognize some of the history that we have and those who have stood up before us and honor those, like Sezard Chavez with the old Monterey County Jail. Don't ignore those pieces of history that we think are important to remember and to shine us for the future. We have mental health challenges, so let's improve on it. Let's build a mental health rehabilitation center. That's really important. We want resources for those who have lacked. We have a health clinic request for Marina. Let's, basic healthcare for all is something that is important, and we know make us all stronger. So in the end, in Monterey County, we step up and we help those in need, and we support those who are strong that will ultimately make us all stronger. Let's come together and make all these pieces work for Monterey County. So, Madam Chair, I thank you, and I turn the microphone back to you.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Charles, for summarizing some of our big asks today and big projects we're working on. With that, I'm going to, I think, pass it, move right along. We're now on item number 3B, and we have a presenter, Jack Murphy, who's a Management Analyst with the Military and Veterans Affairs Department, to speak a little bit about our sponsor legislation, Monterey County Veterans, Monterey County Veterans Home. And just a reminder for, Jack, when you're done, I'll let you pass it right along to the next presenter. And just remind everyone, we've got about three minutes scheduled for each presentation, so that we can make sure we make it through everything.
Thank you, Supervisor Askew and Madam Chair, elected and appointed officials and members of the Legislative Workshop. My name is Jack Murphy, and I'm a Management Analyst at the Monterey County Office of Military and Veterans Affairs. Thank you for the opportunity to advocate on behalf of the healthcare needs of the Central Coast veteran community. You know, California proudly has 1.8 million veterans, the largest population in the country. Here on the Central Coast, we have approximately 108,000 veterans, and many of those veterans are elderly and disabled Korea and Vietnam War-era veterans with acute medical needs. The region is fortunate to have a rich military history, and with that have come multiple VA medical clinics, a robust healthcare infrastructure, economic and employment opportunities, and community social services. Unfortunately, still missing is a long-term care facility for veterans and their spouses. The proposed development of a Calvet Veterans Home here in Monterey County, preferably on or near former Fort Ord, is our answer to the deficit in veteran long-term healthcare. This legislative proposal has deep support from the veteran community to include numerous veteran-serving organizations, the California Association of County Veteran Services Officers, and support from elected officials in our neighboring counties and municipalities. Towards filling this gap in veteran healthcare, this week we had a fruitful meeting with Calvet leaders and staff who actually agreed with our assessment of veteran long-term healthcare needs. The scope of the project, location, and cost will be determined in collaboration with Calvet and the Federal Department of Veterans Affairs. The proposed legislation would also build on previous legislative action that authorized state agencies to pursue the development of what could be Calvet's ninth Veterans Home and the first serving veterans in the Central Coast. Notably, through separate federal legislative action, the VA can fund up to 65% of the development and operational costs, significantly reducing the burden to California's taxpayers. The following two slides also provide some background on the long-term care needs for veterans. There are eight Calvet homes offering a broad range of long-term care services to veterans 55 or older, to include their spouse or partner. The age requirement can be waived for disabled or homeless veterans, providing needed housing or healthcare needs for this high-risk veteran population. Sadly, there's not a Calvet home within a two-and-a-half-hour drive of the Central Coast's 108,000 veterans and their families. Moreover, wait periods for six of the eight Calvet homes can be upwards of five years long. Next slide. With 1.8 million veterans in California, the need for long-term healthcare is certain to continue for many decades. The graph shows that veterans are accessing disability and healthcare benefits at record levels, which includes long-term care in a Calvet home. Lastly, in 2019, California's veterans' healthcare compensation totaled over $8.3 billion, highlighting the importance of both protecting veteran services and retaining veterans here in California. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time, attention, and continued support of this very important proposal. And I'll be followed by the next presenter. Thank you.
Good afternoon, all. I am Brent Bukie, General Manager of the Monterey County Water Resource Agency. Today, we are requesting your consideration to include $312 million in the budget to address the critical water infrastructure needs within the county of Monterey. These projects will not only beneficially impact the entire agricultural community but are also the starting blocks for the six groundwater sustainability plans submitted to the state by the Salinas Valley Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency. Nausmeo and San Antonio dams must be fully functional to realize these greater benefits. Next slide. These dams provide flood control, groundwater recharge, which is the water supply for over 400,000 acres, and the municipal supply to over 200,000 residents of the towns and cities of the Salinas Valley. These reservoirs provide drought resiliency, recreation, and environmental benefits. The $150 million request would be used to address the San Antonio spillway and estimated cost of $60 million, Nausmeo plunge pool repair of $20 million, and the Nausmeo spillway rehabilitation of $20 million. The remaining $46 million would address the other highest priority projects at both dams to include low-level outlet works, embankment drains, seismic stability analysis, and others. The regulators, the California Department of Water Resources, Division of Safety of Dams for both Nausmeo and San Antonio, as well at Nausmeo, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, Division of Dam Safety and Inspection, have already told us that without these fixes, they will enforce reduced water storage. The extended drought, potentially coupled with regulatory reductions, would be devastating to all of us who reside here. MCWRA has already implemented self-imposed reduction to satisfy them for the interim. Next slide, please. The Interlake Tunnel and Spillway Race Project would use another $150 million to construct an underground tunnel between the two reservoirs and raise the height of the San Antonio spillway. This concept works by using the higher-producing watershed of the Nausmeo and moving water to San Antonio for storage. The demands of the Water Resource Agency and the Salinas Valley Basin GSA are to the same stakeholders. Monterey County is self-reliant on water supply. It does not import water from state or federal resources. MCWRA is one of many water agencies that has teamed up with the Association of California Water Agencies and the California Municipal Utilities Association, in sending a letter to Governor Newsom requesting that emergency drought and water infrastructure funding be a priority in the California 2122 budget. We look forward to your support on these projects. Thank you.
Good afternoon, all. I am Randy Ishi. I'm the Director of Public Works, Facilities, and Parks for Monterey County. Here in Monterey County, we unfortunately have communities that face safe drinking water insecurity. San Lucas is a small, severely disadvantaged farming community in the South County of unincorporated Monterey County. It's approximately a mile south of the closest city, which is King City. It consists primarily of Hispanic farmworker families. There's a community water system there of approximately 100 connections that is owned and operated by the San Lucas County Water District. Now, this community of San Lucas is a designated rural center in the county's 2010 general plan. It has the potential of improved infrastructure to support future development, specifically with an eye towards the growing needs of the disadvantaged community as well as the county's critical housing needs. However, it has safe drinking water insecurity. There's a proposed project called the San Lucas Clean Water Drinking Water Project that we have before you today, and it's to address the persistent water quality problems which have plagued the community since 2006. In 2011, a do-not-drink order was issued, and despite establishing an alternative well, an alternative drinking source to serve the community, a second do-not-drink order was issued in 2016. This lack of safe, affordable drinking water for the community has caused a nearly 20-year delay of that severely needed affordable housing in San Lucas that we mentioned before. The county is working on behalf of the district and is seeking alternative funding from the state for this critical water project for the community, which has been on bottled water orders of eight of the past 10 years. This proposed project would construct a new pipeline to tie into the Cal water system, which is on the east side of that closest city, King City, approximately eight miles away. The approximate scope of work is to construct 7.8 miles of new pipeline to connect two communities together. Our request is funding an amount of $12 million for the design, environmental assessment, engineering, and construction work to provide a clean, long-term, reliable source of drinking water to meet the community's current and future needs. With that, we go on to the next slide. The next project we have for you is a creative adaptive reuse project. The site is our old Monterey County Jail, colloquially known as the Old Jail, which is located in downtown, specifically 158 West Alisal Street. It was built in 1931 in the Gothic Revival architectural style during the Art Deco period. The facility originally consisted of a multi-level administration building with access onto Alisal Street. And the jail was located behind this building, connected via stairwell. Additions were made over time, specifically circa 1950 around the original building. And it served as the county's primary jail until a new jail was constructed in 1977. In 1970, Cesar Chavez, one of the United Farm Workers, held a 20-day-long boycott at the site. And this drew national and international attention to the farmworkers and the farmworker community issues. His incarceration brought national figures such as Ethel Kennedy and Credit Scott King to the jail to visit and advocate for his release. This is one of the few sites that, in fact, it's, our records show it's the only historic landmark of the farmworker rights movement here on the Central Coast. As such, in 2004, the old Monterey County Jail was listed on the U.S. National Registry of Stored Places, which also reflected its architectural significance and for areas where Cesar Chavez was imprisoned. The county has tried different reuses of the site. Around 2014, the county began efforts to assess potential reuse, specifically starting with a feasibility study, which evaluated nine options, ranging from just demolition, at ranging at the $4 million cost range, to full restoration, which is approximately $34 million. Later in 2016, the board selected to demolish the facility, but in 2017, changed course to further explore this adaptive reuse opportunity for the facility. There were various requests, proposals that were floated over time, once in 2018 and once in 2019. However, we generated no responses from that. But later in 2019, the board provided direction to seek state budget funding to restore the administration wing and add a new building and preserve the Alisal Street facade at a park and some other features. Thus, the request for you today is that Monterey County seeks $15 million to retain the administrative building portion of the old Monterey County Jail, seeking these adaptive reuse opportunities and keeping with its Art Deco style and making the best use of that for our community and for generations to come. With that, we thank you and we'll be available after the presentations for any questions.
Good afternoon. Elsa Jimenez, your Health Director in Monterey County. Thank you for taking your time today to meet with us. I have two projects before you today. First, I want to present on our mental health rehab facility. As was articulated by my CAO earlier today, there are growing needs for individuals with mental health needs. And currently, the state does not have sufficient capacity to be able to house those individuals. We have, find ourselves with the unique opportunity right now where there is a recently vacated part of the old county jail that could be rehabilitated to form a mental health rehab facility that would house up to 120 individuals that would not only meet the needs of Monterey County, but also our nearby counties. So what is a mental health rehab facility? It's a 24-hour program that provides intensive support and rehabilitative services designed to assist people 18 and older with mental disorders who would otherwise have been placed in a state hospital or another mental health facility to help them improve their skills that they need to become more self-sufficient and capable of increasing their levels of independent functioning. Currently, Monterey County has 50 residents that are placed in facilities all over the state because of the lack of infrastructure here locally. We know that by providing a treatment center here locally, it keeps our residents home, close to family, which we know is very important as part of their rehabilitation journey. So your support for this mental health rehab facility would again add up to 120 beds to what is currently available, which is only 1,800 beds statewide, according to the Department of Healthcare Services. And we estimate that this project would be about $40 million to construct. And we recently were awarded $150,000 planning grant from the Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure Program. So it would be great to receive support to be able to move our project from planning phase to actual construction phase. Next slide. Our second department request is for an expanded Monterey County Health Clinic in the city of Marina. The Monterey County Health Department Clinic Services began its as a three-network clinic in our county in the early 1990s. In 1994, we received recognition as a federally qualified health center look-alike. And then in 2019, we received full FQHC designation. Since then, we've grown to 10 locations across the Seaside, Marina, and Salinas communities. And we serve about 45,000 patients in 2020. We provide primary care, preventative care, dental services, mental health, and enabling services across their lifespan. The city of Marina is in service area zip code 93933. Its service area, there are about 9,000 residents who are low-income, meaning they're below the 200% federal poverty level. And we are only able to serve about 2,600 of those residents due to limited capacity, both from an infrastructure as well as from staffing. So what does this mean in terms of our ability to serve and penetrate in the city of Marina? We are only able to serve about 30%, so 70% of our low-income residents in the city of Marina don't have immediate access to affordable primary and preventative care. This proposal is to construct a 10,000-square-foot clinic that would provide expanded general family practice, pediatric, obstetrics, gynecology, and mental health services for our Medi-Cal and uninsured residents in the city of Marina and surrounding communities at an estimated cost of about $10 million. Thank you. I'll hand it back to the chair.
Thank you so much to our county department head presenters. These are just a few of the many, many things that we've got county departments working on. But thank you for the quick summary. And we do have fact sheets attached with the agenda and that should have been provided to all of our legislative staff who are with us today as well. Next, we're going to move on to the opportunity to hear some remarks from our state and federal legislators on priorities that relate to things that you're working on to benefit Monterey County. We are on time as of right now, and we do have about three to five minutes dedicated so that we can hear from everyone. We'll let you monitor the the time on that. Before we get started with, we'll move right on to Senator John Laird, who I know is on a tight time schedule today. I did just want to thank all of our legislators for sending your staff to join the county legislative committee meetings. We really appreciate and value the time that they spend with us once a month at those legislative committee meetings. But with that, I'm pleased to welcome Senator John Laird to join us for some comments.
Thank you very much. A pleasure to be here, and I think it was a tactical mistake to allow the legislators to limit their own time. And I am zooming from Cal State University Monterey Bay, where I just had lunch with the president and his top staff, where they told me how they want me to spend the entire state surplus. So I think I'll try to do bullets here. I appreciated the presentation. It was very helpful. And on the issue of water, I have a priority of the drought package of trying to, for example, at Nausmeo and San Antonio, get that money to repair the valves and the other things and do that across the district. And we have a real shot at that as the first priority with regard to water. I want to thank you for your action on the Watsonville Hospital. I did something that was land speed for legislation, just under three weeks from start to finish in getting a bill signed by the governor to set up the hospital district so that we have a way that a bid can be submitted and that hospital can be saved. And it really is a coalition of everybody. I'm glad you were in it. I also, Jimmy Panetta will be on later. I did the bill last year, and we've already talked about it together for the Paharo Levy Project and having the state buy out the local share. We're working on getting the federal share. I did a Zoom with Senator Padilla yesterday to enlist him on his help. Congressman Panetta is really out front, trying to make that happen so we can get the project moved ahead. I am doing an innocuous bill on the Veteran Cemetery at Fort Ord at the request of the Veterans Department to remove some reporting requirements that are outdated. I think the big issue overall is what you've all been talking about. It's the budget. And the, I chair the Education Budget Subcommittee. We are having 10 hearings in four and a half weeks. We did three and four this week. I did a Zoom with the Monterey County Superintendent and the Monterey Superintendents yesterday to make sure we include their needs in the budget. But overall, the surplus is estimated to be anywhere in the neighborhood of $45 to $50 billion. That is misleading as a number because four to five billion is scraped off the top for reserves and 20 billion is scraped off the top for schools. So it really leaves about half that as discretionary for us to decide what to do. The top priority is going to be one-time expenditures, so we don't add to the ongoing expenditures. We did broadband last year. We're really going to work to see that that's implemented. I am privately working to try to do a special project in Monterey County with broadband for certain areas with schools and hope to have more to talk about that later. And we are really doing due diligence on what the additions last year were and how they're being spent. On homelessness, and I was at a project this morning at Marina, on childcare, on healthcare, all the things we did last year, we want to make sure are being expended correctly and that if we're going to do additions, that it's based on how that is being implemented. In the budget last year, really at the initial impetus of the Monterey Farm Bureau, I was instrumental in getting UC Cooperative Ag Extension restored to where it was 15 or 20 years ago. It was a 55% increase. And we are working, we had a hearing this week, to make sure they're hiring people, that that is actually happening. And it is happening around the state. It will really help our agricultural users. And so my goal is just to work with you as we move through this budget process. I heard the requests. I heard them clearly. Some of them would fall into ongoing. Some of them are very much one-time. We're competitive with all 58 counties. And I think it's our job to to try to deliver. And I work well as a team with Senator Caballero, with Assemblymember Stone and Rivas. And I should say one last thing on redistricting. I was elected to represent part of Monterey County until December 2024. I will be doing that. But at the same time, there will be a significant part of Monterey County that won't technically have a senator from 2022 to 2024. And the Senate has a process to assign those unrepresented areas to a sitting senator. And it is quite likely, although not for sure, that I will be assigned that and hopefully get some extra resources to make sure that there is full representation regardless of where certain areas of Monterey County fall in the election cycle. With that, I'm sorry that I have to head out the door. I really appreciate you accommodating me first, and I really look forward to working together as we move through this legislative and budget year.
Thank you so much for joining us, Senator Laird, and we really appreciate, we appreciate all the work that you're doing on our behalf. Look forward to continuing the conversation with you in the future. Next up, we would like to welcome our Congressman Jimmy Panetta, who's joining us today to give us an update about what he's been up to on our behalf.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate this opportunity. And yes, you're on time until you get to the electeds, obviously. And so hopefully, hopefully I can help, but something tells me I won't in regards to your time management. But thank you for this opportunity and thanks to the Board of Supervisors. And I truly, truly appreciate your service, not only as my representatives, but also professionally in the partnership that we have in our work together to serve our home here in Monterey County. So thank you very much. And thanks for giving me this opportunity to talk about the work that has been going on in Washington, DC, especially when it comes to COVID relief, when it comes to infrastructure investment and what we're going to be working on coming up in 2022. Obviously, with COVID stimulus, you've heard me talk about this numerous times. And I'm going to continue to state this, which you'll hear throughout this next year, because I think it's important and yes, because we are still in a pandemic. But obviously, reminding you and reminding the people of Monterey County that the federal government played its part in the strategy that Chris Lopez likes to repeat of federally funded, state-authorized, and locally executed. And obviously, the federal funds that came into Monterey County, clearly, I believe, contributed to our efforts to continue to fight the COVID-19 pandemic. Obviously, with Monterey County receiving over $130 million and doing appropriate things with it, like you did with the $1.9 million to, for your broadband efforts. Truly appreciate that. Monterey County Cities received over $85 million. And then that's not including what Monterey County received in rental assistance, $10 million. K through 12 schools, $126 million. Our colleges received $50 million. Our hospitals received $31 million. And our federally qualified health clinics received $11 million. Not to mention the PPP loans that were distributed to 4,394 businesses in Monterey County, which affected 62,671 jobs. So obviously, that type of funding, stimulus funding that came into a county, into this county, I believe, kept our economy afloat, kept our poverty rate flat, and really kept us in a good position to deal with the variants that we had to deal with over this past year when it came to Delta and the Omicron variant. Now, going forward, obviously, we're going to be talking about infrastructure investment with the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. And the number one question that you have, I'm sure, and that most do, is when's it going to be implemented? When are we going to start seeing the investment fundings? Well, it's obviously a process is going to take place and continuing to take place. But I do believe, especially in my conversations with Mitch Landrieu, Mayor Mitch Landrieu of New Orleans, who is now in that special position to help administer these funds. What you're going to see right now is these funds come through 350 distinctive programs across 12 federal departments. Basically, this can get confusing. It can be overwhelming. But know that my office and I am here to help you get through this. Obviously, we have distributed an information guide in regards to where this funding is going to come from. And yes, we are always, always here to help support any efforts to obtain this type of funding and provide letters of support. Obviously, in having our conversations, like I did today with Supervisor Lopez and the RCRC, realizing that it's not just about funding for the hard broadband investment, but also the technical assistance that's necessary that's out there as well. Having that conversation is something that we could use in order to bring back to the federal government and let them know that it's that type of assistance that's necessary on top of the hardware. So look forward to doing that. Already nailed down, we're already starting to see certain funding coming into the district. Our Monterey Airport received 2.1 million from the IIJA. Salinas Airport received 300,000. Marina Airport, 159,000. And the King City Airport received 110,000. When it comes to transit funding, basically, it's broken down via Metro District. And what we saw is MST received 8 million for Salinas and 4.8 million for Seaside and Marina. And yes, our Monterey Harbor even took advantage and got some funding for jetty repairs. for jetty repairs and receiving twenty thousand dollars. Now, what's coming down the pipe? Well, what we're seeing, at least what's narrowed down to California at this point is three point five billion dollars for water infrastructure, eighty four million dollars for wildfire prevention. At a minimum, a hundred million dollars for broadband investment, twenty five point three billion dollars for highways and four point two billion dollars for bridges. Now, going forward into twenty twenty two, what we have to do in Congress, let me tell you, we have to pass a budget. We have to stop passing continuing resolutions. We got to make sure we have to stop governing by crisis and actually governed by leadership. And hopefully we'll be able to do that by passing a budget in March, early March. I say that for a number of reasons. One, because we can't keep having continuing resolutions, which hurt a number of people and including our military. But also parts of the IIJA cannot be implemented until they have a budget. And I've already been a part of two bipartisan letters that we sent to leadership telling them that we need to pass a budget as soon as possible. This also affects the NDA, the National Defense Authorization Act and funding for that, which obviously will affect funding for our local military installations that we have in Monterey County. You're also going to be hearing about the Competes Act, which we passed in Congress last week. It's going to go to negotiation with the Senate and their version of that in regards to the US Innovation and Competition Act, otherwise known as UCECA, the USICA. These are bills that are going to be coming together in conference. And then what you're going to see is a final product, I can tell you probably sooner rather than later, that is actually going to improve our competitiveness by bolstering our domestic semiconductor manufacturing, which is important. Last week, we passed major postal reform legislation that's going to save fifty billion dollars over the next ten years. That's going to be headed over to the Senate. It's a bipartisan bill. And then we're also working to reauthorize VAWA, the Violence Against Women Act for funding for domestic violence programs. Recovering America's Wildlife Act, which is funding for conservation projects, programs. And then obviously protecting our Electoral College vote count. We're going to be passing the Electoral Count Act. Quickly, in regards to the BBB, which Build Back Better Act, what you're going to see is probably certain items in the Senate taken from that and put forward. One, dealing with the child tax credit, something that was passed to the American Rescue Plan is actually reduced child poverty by over a twenty five percent. So I think you'll see that putting put forward and having means tested added to that. Basically, people who can receive that only can make a certain amount. And then obviously the climate change provisions are going to be coming out of the Senate is what we're pushing for as well. Tax incentives to reduce our carbon output, when it comes to our energy sector and transportation sector, especially including my bills that are in that bill that is investments, incentives for investments in microgrids, linear generators, e-buses and e-bikes. And then yes, closing out with redistricting, obviously understanding that the new nineteenth congressional district does have the Central Coast at heart. If I'm fortunate enough to be reelected, knowing that obviously with my leadership and as well as with working with the representative of the twentieth new twentieth congressional district, I'm sure we'll continue our partnership when it comes to the work that we're doing for the people here in Monterey County. So look forward to continuing that as well. Thank you again for your service and thanks for your partnership and your work serving our home here in Monterey County.
Thank you so much Congressman Panetta. We are so grateful to have you representing our voice in Washington DC and appreciate how available you always are when we need you. We're going to move right along to, let's see here, we're going to go to Assemblymember Mark Stone, followed by Assemblymember Robert Rivas. And I think I see Assemblymember Stone on the line. Just make sure, there you are. Okay. Hello. Welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you Supervisor Askew and Supervisors, happy to be here and happy to continue to work with you as we've worked so closely over a number of years. We have a very special area around the Monterey Bay region and it's well worth preserving and protecting from environmental standpoint, but also investing in the people that we have. So my report, I'll focus a little bit on what we've been doing in the district office because my district staff has been focused entirely on constituent services the last couple of years. For example, just over the last year, we have opened almost twenty five hundred cases of constituents with concerns, most of it with the Employment Development Department. And a lot of those cases are have been closed as we have moved through a lot of the challenges of the pandemic already. But unfortunately, there still are a number of cases open and that takes quite a bit of handholding. A lot of what we do are frankly, things that the agencies at the state level should be better responsive to our constituents for, but the reality is, is that they're just not. And so it takes quite a bit of our staff time to ensure that we are the best advocates we can be for the people in this along the Central Coast. That being said, as we're working, looking ahead at this ongoing year, now I think a lot of my work will continue to be the same as as I've been working on to date. Last year, we made some pretty significant changes in how some of the kids who are hardest to serve coming out of the child welfare system, both dependency and delinquency systems, how they're being served. In fact, the state and many counties had sent a lot of those kids out of state and the outcomes for them were not good. The state of California ended up bringing all of those kids back into the state, but what we what that really showed was we have a lack of resource and a lack of capacity to handle some of those kids. So we put together a pilot program of very intensive therapeutic supports that we will be building probably on a regional basis to support that level of kids. This year, we're going to take it a step further, even as that pilot is being built and I'm proposing now working with Department of Social Services and Department of Healthcare Services that we expand that capacity to help all kids, not just in the dependency or delinquency systems, but all kids facing mental health crisis. We have, and especially in our rural areas, a lack of resources, a lack of beds, a lack of placements for a lot of these children. So we're going to try and expand that. Whereas we've been able to put last year, two hundred million dollars, I think it was towards these next steps of dealing with the most vulnerable and the hardest to serve kids in California. And we're looking to add more so that we can increase the capacity to to kids facing mental health crisis. And we know that mental health crises are have always been significant, but now as we come through the pandemic, those mental health issues are even more acute and more severe. So that's going to be a big effort that will impact all counties and how we're dealing with those kids. I must say, I am grateful to Santa Cruz and Monterey Counties, our region and the willingness to deal with our community members, whether it's their kids or their families and really get to some of the causes of the challenges that those families have. And by doing so, reducing then we can reduce the cycles of violence and reduce the impacts of some of the poverty that we've seen. And those investments then will head off even more significant investments that would have to otherwise be made in the juvenile justice system and in the child welfare system. So we're continuing to work along that end. Another thing that I've been working on that would affect a lot of people in Monterey, given the the high percentage of people who are living, working in our communities with undocumented status is that we've been trying for years to get all people coming out of prisons and jails adequate identification. And we're continuing that effort now and trying to see how we best get the Department of Motor Vehicles and Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation to issue those identifications and in fact, make all make California identifications available to anyone who wants one regardless of immigration status. And that's been a real gap in what we've, what's been available for Californians. But I think it will be very beneficial to people. The modern life is very, very difficult with a lot of the functions that people have to interact with and not having a valid government issued identification is a significant impediment to many people's success. Those are a couple of the areas that that we're working on for this year. Continuing efforts with with justice reform in my role as Chair of the Judiciary Committee also, we're always looking at the bar, trying to diversify the bar, the bench and ensure that we are increasing access to justice, funding for courthouses, funding for the courts to be able to have the adequate service levels, judges and things around the state is long been an issue. And with the amount of money now that California is looking at, I'm hopeful this year we can continue to make some significant strides in ensuring that people really do have access to the justice system in a way that that meets their needs. So I appreciate being here, being able to present a little bit to you, hearing your challenges and your priorities. And I thank you for the time.
Thank you so much for joining us and with the with the redistricting lines moving, Assemblymember Stone, I just want to say thank you again for all of your service to Monterey County. We have absolutely enjoyed working with you and will deeply miss the commitment that I know you've had to serving the needs of our residents.
Thank you. I will still be serving the district I was elected to in twenty twenty and after that, but you know, you have a friend who understands a lot of the issues that you are that you're facing. And since a lot of the work that I have done is is more focused statewide, then I I know we'll continue to have a lot of conversations and work on policy together.
We know where to find you. We're going to make a slight change in our schedule and we're honored to have Congresswoman Zoe Lofgren be able to join us. Zoe represents the district just north of Congressman Panetta. And with redistricting, some of those changes will will play out for Monterey County. So thank you so much for joining us today and we wanted to see if you had a couple of minutes that you wanted to share a little bit about yourself and about some of the things that you're working on that impact and benefit Monterey County residents. We've got to get you unmuted first. Let's see here. Let's make sure we've got sound.
Thank you very much for letting me visit with you just a bit. I'm actually in Watsonville right now. I've been spending the day looking at some of the issues that Watsonville is facing with city council members and school board members. As I think Jimmy probably mentioned, and you all know, the Redistricting Commission did change lines and now I have the honor of running for reelection in a district that includes a large portion of Monterey County. I just want to say how grateful I am to the members of the Board of Supervisors, as well as the city council members and mayors in the county who have been willing to talk to me, give me their information because one of the my goals is to do the very best job possible of representing you after the election in November. I won't go through what Jimmy, I'm sure, has already gone through in terms of the agenda, but I think a major question for us is how to bring the resources that is in the bipartisan infrastructure bill the president has signed into law into these communities. You know, from water treatment to water resources to flood control to broadband, there are a lot of needs and we need to work together to bring these resources to these communities. In terms of Congress, you know, I have a lot of roles, but one of the most important ones that I cherish is Chair of the Immigration Subcommittee and House of Representatives. One of the things that I hope to be able to do in the remainder of this Congress is to get the Farm Workforce Modernization Act enacted into law. That was a bill that I authored with the help of a bipartisan group of members of Congress, including Jimmy Panetta, but Republican members as well, united farm workers and growers and other ag employers. It took us nearly a year to write the bill. We had a good, strong bipartisan vote, sent it to the Senate that did nothing in the last Congress. We sent it again. And I think getting that enacted into law is a really important thing that is doable if we can get some of the senators who are appear to be frozen to actually get moving. The other goal I have is to get the Dream Act through the Senate. That again, has been passed twice through the House of Representatives. But we have hundreds of thousands of young people who are essentially Americans in every way but their paperwork. It is long past time that we allow them to become settled legally so that they can move forward with their lives and fully participate in their country. I look forward to continuing to work with all of you. I know you have a busy agenda. So I won't go on now, but you know where I am. I look forward to hearing from you. I know that I don't know at all, so I welcome not only questions, but advice. And again, I just want to thank the members of this board for their warm hospitality to me. And I look forward to a long future together.
Thank you so much Congresswoman for joining us and making time to to chat with us at our legislative workshop today. We really do appreciate you spending the time to get to know us a little bit better. All right, let's see here. We are playing moving shell games here, but I think I've caught Assemblymember Robert Rivas. Thank you for your patience. We're so pleased to have you join us today.
Of course, it's always so great to see everybody, even if it's virtually. But it's really great to be here and is always appreciate the opportunity to participate. You know, this engagement is always so, so important, you know, and I can't emphasize enough how how much I've always appreciated the proactive engagement from the county, supervisors, from staff. I can recall prior to the pandemic, I think one of the last visits I had in my office was from Supervisor Adams and the county staff, you know, and so certainly it's it's really our work in in collaboration, that work that that we do has always been about making progress on our most pressing issues, our most important issues to our overlapping our constituencies, you know, and elevating awareness of important some community initiatives, projects and working together to bring critical resources and state dollars to the county Monterey is always no, you know, our intended goals. And so as has been already mentioned by by Assemblymember Stone, by Senator Laird and by our congressional partners, you know, this has been a busy year thus far. Since returning to Sacramento in January, our focus has primarily been on on three areas. You know, the first is this COVID nineteen pandemic. As Vice Chair of the California Latino Legislative Caucus, I've been involved in helping alleviate issues and concerns to our governor, to his administration. These issues and these concerns that are related to our state's response throughout this this pandemic, you know, issues and concerns from those communities most impacted, such as our own, our agricultural region, our agricultural workforce, very proud of the work that was done locally by agricultural industry, by local leaders, by boards of supervisors, county staff, to really take this proactive approach and and has been a model for not only the state of California, but really the entire country as far as how we respond, how we enforce workplace guidelines, how we, you know, have had these proactive measures around COVID testing and vaccines. And it's really this engagement and work that has been ongoing for our office, whether it has been trying to understand and navigate what seems like, you know, these evolving workplace guidelines issued through the Department of Public Health, through Cal OSHA, trying to help and secure COVID tests, vaccines, rapid rehousing and securing those resources and you're trying to understand those opportunities and, you know, how we can apply that to our region. You know, and I can't emphasize enough, I know this has already been alluded to, but we must remain very vigilant when it comes to COVID nineteen. You know, I really, I dislike the reference that living with COVID nineteen is this new normal. And the continual effort to downplay the seriousness of what we've been through and continue to go through with COVID nineteen. Clearly, living through COVID nineteen has been exhausting. We are all exhausted by regulations, by mandates, by guidelines. But, you know, we must clearly adapt to this new environment, but there is nothing normal about it. You know, we can't downplay that the US continues to have the most COVID infections and deaths per country, anywhere in the world. I think we can all agree that AIDS has been and continues to be considered a major public health crisis. And I just read, it was in fact, just yesterday that, you know, it could, it should be a concern to us all that as many people who died of AIDS in its worst year, nineteen ninety five, about fifty thousand people died that year. Fifty thousand people are dying every single month of COVID. Again, we must stay vigilant. These aren't normal times. And second, we absolutely must remain focused on our worsening housing and homelessness crisis in our situation here in California, trying to better understand the administration's efforts through through this year's proposed budget to figure out and find ways where we can leverage the potential funding to meet our unique housing challenges in Monterey County and our surrounding region. Our focus will remain on workforce housing, in particular, farm worker agriculture housing. A proud to have successfully helped secure over a hundred A proud to have successfully helped secure over 100 million, a $100 million investment last year for the construction and rehabilitation of permanent farm worker housing. It's a significant investment, but we need to do a lot more. When you consider this problem of critical overcrowding and the need our labor issues, it all comes down to the ability to house this workforce and to house them in a dignified way. It clearly outweighs our ability in the private sector or public to finance and produce the dignified housing that that our agricultural families certainly need and that they deserve. A third area that we've been focusing in, that we have been focusing on is Chair of Assembly Agriculture. We've been involved in discussions regarding what short or long-term solutions we can take as a state when it comes to this global supply chain crisis we're experiencing. Recently partnered with my colleague from Long Beach, Assemblymember O'Donnell, as we led this informational hearing related to ag exports and in California ports issues. As we know, here in California, we have been a worldwide leader in the agriculture industry. We're an industry that works to put food on the tables across the globe. And ultimately, we help maintain the world's food supply chain. So new research indicates that from May to September of 2021, just last year, port and supply chain congestion cost California farmers approximately 2.1 billion, billion with a B, in ag exports. That represents a loss more costly than the 2018 US-China trade war. And so clearly, our supply chain crisis is a very complex one, but it's going to require significant investment from the federal and the state level. But it's a crisis that certainly requires that we take very proactive measures to to stop this financial bleeding for the ag industry and and make investments and improvements to relieve ongoing port congestion where we can. There's actions we can take and working with our colleagues with this administration to to see what we can do. Legislatively, we're finalizing our legislative package for this year. However, next week, we will be rolling out legislation to improve community funding for water restoration projects to ensure that better representation of environmental justice and tribal groups on on the state and regional water boards. But as always, I look forward to sharing more as we move forward this year on not only these, you know, these issues, but other issues we'll be working on. But always appreciate the invitation, the engagement, appreciate all that you do, the staff, supervisors, and look forward to working with you this upcoming year. Thank you, Wendy.
Fabulous. Thank you so much, Assemblymember Rivas, for joining us. You've got a lot on your plate and we see and feel it, the results of your work here. So thank you again for and the flexibility too with our constantly moving schedule this morning, this afternoon. All right, next up, I'm so pleased to welcome warmly Senator Ana Caballero, who is joining us today. Senator, thank you so much for taking the time to tell us a little bit about some of the work that you're doing to serve our Monterey County families and residents.
Thank you very much, Chair Askew. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for inviting me. I do have a copy of the priorities proposals for for the county and started going through that earlier. And I want you to know that it's very helpful and it, there's a number of requests in there that I think are are it really issues that we're funding at the at the state level. We're making sure that there are resources in oversubscribed areas. And so we, I look forward to working together with you on this. Let me just say that that I really, this, this has been an interesting two plus years with this coronavirus pandemic. The ledge session last year was pretty much dominated by COVID and everything COVID to include distributing PPE, hand sanitizer, food, to be able to alleviate some of the the social dysfunction that occurred because of of the virus. And I held a whole series of town hall meetings with the county public health officers, entrusted leaders in order to disseminate accurate information. And so I, I, that was a, not a legislative issue, but it certainly was something that was particularly important because every single county was doing their process a little bit differently. They were rolling out their vaccines, they were rolling out their their masks. They were asking people to socially distance and to and and closing businesses not on in an organized way, but but kind of by county. And so it was really difficult for people to know if they worked in one county and lived in another county, what the rules were. I, I, last year was part of two Senate working groups that 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 worked on broadband and housing, which are two of the intractable issues that we continue to see plague our state. I also authored a rural broadband bill, SB 28, which was signed by the governor. It's a data bill which prohibits the cable companies from redlining communities and census tracts that are that are have low income rate payers. They're prohibited from doing this, but we don't collect data to be able to ascertain whether that's happening or not. And one of the things we learned during the closure of the schools is that our poorest students were those that that had no access to to the internet and that really detrimentally affected their their education. And and so we were able to to work together in the Senate to pass a series of bills that are are going to make a tremendous difference along with the $6 billion in in state and federal resources to build out the middle mile and and focus on the last mile as well. And so there are resources for for cities and counties to be able to access to start to build out their infrastructure. And so encourage, and there's technical assistance money as well. So more on that as we, as the money starts to roll out. I also authored a bill that provided $2.5 billion in small business grants between $5,000 and $25,000. And I did a road trip to go to communities. The priorities were community disproportionately affected because of coronavirus and businesses disproportionately affected minority women-owned businesses. And as part of that, also worked very diligently on a micro grant program. The county has the opportunity to sign up for that program and their grants of $2,500 to to some of the smaller businesses in the community, their their grants, you don't have to pay them and you don't owe any taxes on them as well. And then the other bill that I worked on was a was a vape tax. What we know is that vaping products have become a real problem in our community, in particular among the youth. And the bill equalized the tax on tobacco products, so it matches what what you pay if you're buying cigarettes or or other tobacco products. And and it's a, it's a, it's a tax on the sale of the electronic cigarettes. And the money goes to fund those programs that have always gotten tobacco money in addition to money going towards the medical schools that are serving in California. I'm really happy with that. Had the opportunity to work with a number of groups of young people that were really interested in this issue and it provided testimony in committees as well. So those are the things that that I worked on last year. I'm going to continue to work on on housing to be able to convert commercial and retail into mixed use. There's an issue with county unincorporated islands that are surrounded by cities. And I'm going to work to require that those be annexed into the city and put up some state funds to help make that that happen. That's been a request for a number of years now and 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 it's it's really overdue. It's the old Alaska rules that allowed you to jump over county unincorporated areas near your city. I'm also looking at a bill to provide some vehicle miles travel relief. The VMT rules were set up for highly urbanized areas. And you use that instead of the level of service in your community to determine what the traffic needs are going to be. VMT is requires now that you you mitigate any traffic that you create by putting a fee on on the housing. And what that's going to do in rural communities is we don't have the infrastructure for a robust public transportation system, so those fees are going to be fairly significant and they're going to significantly increase the cost of housing. That VMT was expanded by by OPR and without the necessary understanding about the the level of service and VMT analysis. And so I'm going to be working on that and also on a bill to to stop the illegal water theft by cannabis cultivators. A significant amount of our water is lost because of the illegal grows up in the mountains. And that's water during a drought that's desperately needed downstream. And so it's about time we start busting people that are illegally pulling water out of the system. So I am now the new Chair of Governance and Finance, and so I'm very excited about that. That's a committee in the Senate. And I look forward to to working with the county as as this year rolls on. Every year seems to be a little bit different than what we think it's going to be. So hopefully, knock on wood, we rounded the corner with with the coronavirus. The numbers are going in the right direction and and so I'm hoping that that we're going to be able to get back to normal, whatever normal is now. So thank you very much for the opportunity to join you.
If you can figure out what normal, what the new normal is, Senator, please do let us know. Thank you so much for joining us. I know that you've got a lot going on today and we're so grateful that you were able to to jump on to share a little bit of your work with us. And again, as I mentioned to Senator or Assemblymember Stone, we just really want to say thank you for just your dedicated service and especially for you, Anna, your 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 commitment and love of our community is deep and and strong and goes back for many years. So we will, we will miss having your representation here in Monterey County with the changing lines. But know that we can always reach out to you and know that you will be watching closely for what our needs are. So thank you again for joining us. We really, really appreciate it. Okay, let's see here. We are going to hop right on back over to Senator Dianne Feinstein's office. And I believe we have Zach Baden on the line with us to share a little bit about what Senator Feinstein is working on. Thank you so much for joining us today, Zach.
Thank you. And thank you for allowing me to be here to represent Senator Feinstein. I'm her field representative that covers Monterey County. I'm gonna keep my comments brief. I don't need to rehash things that Congressman Panetta said about the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. He gave a very good breakdown of what those what that looks like. The Senator and her staff are very, very involved with that implementation process and will stay, you know, as more and more rounds of funding come out. Just last week, she and staff met with an Army Corps of Engineers representative because they had just come out with their, the first round of funding for water resource development. And it was slightly underserving for California, just less percentage than we would have expected. So we'll stay on top of that and make sure that, you know, those funds continue to make their way to California. Also, the recently announced $57 million in electric vehicle charging was announced for California as well. So we can get some of that in the county. You know, we continue to negotiate and, you know, we're going to pass this continuing resolution next week to fund the government through March. But hopefully in March, we'll be able to pass a full omnibus bill. Leadership is is optimistic about it. And we, the Senator is pushing for large investments in dam safety, more water resource development money. We've got for cleaning clean water and drinking water and et cetera. Other bills that the Senator is very proud of, this past week, we reintroduced the, or we've introduced for the first time, actually, the new Violence Against Women Act Reauthorization Bill. That's a culmination of a multi-year effort to come to a compromise between Democrats and Republicans. So that's, you know, looks, it looks really good. You know, it's about supporting, you know, victims of domestic abuse and increasing the ability of increasing supportive services and law enforcement's ability to assist those women. Senator Feinstein also last week reintroduced the West Coast Ocean Prevention, Ocean Protection Act to prevent offshore drilling in California in particular. So we're happy about that. And then as I believe Congresswoman Lofgren mentioned, we are also working on a staff level to introduce a, the Farm Workforce Modernization Act in the Senate. The Senator Feinstein has been working for many years on what she calls a blue card legislation, which, you know, improves the passage of citizenship for our farm workers. And so, you know, we're hoping we'll be able to introduce that in the coming months. You know, beyond that, there are a number of bills, but I, you know, I just want to keep my comments brief. And I'm always available in our Northern California office here for any kind of contact that you might like. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Zach. And I'm glad it's ocean. Would you say not ocean prevention, but? Good. We love our oceans here on the Central Coast, which, okay. Well, thank you. Please, please tell the Senator that we really appreciate having her representation as well and appreciate the the staff time that she's dedicated to this 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 workshop today and to working with our legislative team. We really, we know that you're paying attention and therefore she's also hearing our needs.
Of course. Just quickly, you know, we're still not doing in-person meetings, but we're always available as, so please reach out.
Excellent. Thank you again. And unfortunately, we didn't have anyone. Senator Pidiya's office was not able to join us today, but we do work closely with them through our our federal advocacy efforts and appreciate the the representation there. All right, let's see here. We are going to, we're a little bit behind time. So we've got about 15 minutes on our schedule today to hear from supervisors with comments. So we will leave this with about three minutes per supervisor for some highlights about things that you're working on, priorities that you've got. Well, we've got the full attention of our state and elected representatives. We'll start with Senator Luis Alejo, who is, serves with me on the Legislative Committee, who helped us pull this, pull this workshop off. So Senator, sorry, not Senator, Supervisor, we'll see. Supervisor Luis Alejo, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief as well. First of all, I want to thank our state and federal legislators. Most importantly, their staff, because we all know staff do a lot of the follow-through work with Monterey County. We are very appreciative of their constant participation in our meetings. We created this for them on our Gens each month, but we know that as partners, because when the state and federal legislators approve funding, it's us and local government that implement them. So we're your partners in making sure we're carrying out the goals that we're doing the follow-through and making sure they're serving their intended purpose. I just want to mention some of the things that on our goals this year, as this is our opportunity as one of the few counties that has this kind of legislative meeting, so that we can get all on the same page and hopefully have some successes at the end of the year on things that we've worked on together. And certainly, the veterans home is already obtaining a ground well of support. Many letters are going to be forwarded to you from a lot of different veterans organizations, homelessness service providers. And we do already have letters of support from Santa Clara, San Benito, Santa Cruz. And I think we're getting something coming in from San Luis Obispo County as well. So this will have strong local support. You will have the community behind you on this. And we're also doing our due diligence by following through. Next Tuesday, Supervisor Lopez and I are meeting in our, while we're in DC, meeting with the Department of Veteran Affairs, the VA, about this topic. And just yesterday, we met with Cal Vet, their top staff on this. And guarantee, though, if you ask them the question, they'll say they agree that there isn't enough beds to serve our aging and our disabled veterans in California. With 1.8 million, there's less than 3,000 beds all over the state. And that can only serve a fifth of 1% of our veterans. And we know our veterans are getting older as time goes on. So I think we're in a position to advocate for one to come into our beautiful region, desirable place for our veterans locally, but also in other parts of California. And but but they will say one issue they will raise is that it wasn't part of their master plan that was updated two or three years ago. And I think from their, our conversation, it appeared that was because they were focusing on remodeling the Yonville Center, which is the oldest veterans home. And they were also working on some local issues and they're going to be able to do that in these next few years. But new veterans homes, at least the legislation that was signed into law 20 years ago this year by Senator Johansson, SB 1234, it created the Fresno and the Redding Veterans Home. It took eight years after that to actually finalize it and get it open and serve the community. So we're really talking about a veterans home that will serve the community down the road. We know it's going to take years, but if we don't start now, we're never going to get there. And I think with a surplus in the budget and with a 65% match from the feds, I think we're in a good position to make an argument that it's needed to serve our veterans locally. The only other two things I would just say, I want to thank Assemblymember Rivas, who's been a champion for the old Monterey County jail. We had a request in with the support of our other legislators in 2020, but then COVID hit and we had to pull back those members' requests, but we're hoping that this year we get some money to save that important piece of farm worker rights history. The only place Cessna Chalice was ever jailed and released on Christmas Eve. We want to preserve that history for our future generations. And we're coupling it this time around with perhaps having And we're coupling it this time around with perhaps having a family justice center. It's a referral by Supervisor Phillips that could help victims of domestic violence, human trafficking, elder abuse, to get services all in one location. We think that's one of the other, perhaps, potential repurposes of, 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 of a re, a fixed up building. Lastly, on water, I'm excited because there is money for water. We know there's a drought. And I just wanted to give an example that Los Veleros was in the San Luis Obispo News a few weeks ago, the reservoir in Contra Costa County. And they have a $1 billion project to raise a reservoir to, similarly, to expand water storage capacity, a billion dollar project. But they got 470 million in Prop 1 Water Bond, 223 million in federal funds. That's almost 70% of the project in public funds. The other 30% is going to be paid by local water agencies there in the region. So we're similarly hoping that we could, if we make an ask that we could get significant funds from the state and federal dollars. And that would make it much easier for our local ratepayers to pass it to 18 to pay a local match as well. So with that, thank you very, thank you very much, Madam Chair, and to all our legislators.
Thank you, Supervisor Alejo. We'll go next to Supervisor Phillips.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, I don't have much to say, but I think it's, it's important that we do get together like this and talk a little bit. But the most important thing is, is when our legislators pick up the phone to talk to us. And I've never called about a problem that we had that the phone wasn't answered and the call got back. Senator Laird caught me at the phone at 8 o'clock one morning, talking about the Watsonville Hospital. But some of the things here in North County that are important to us is water, especially domestic water that we're working on. And I can't say enough about all that Jimmy Panetta has done for the Potrero River. We've been working on this. I was giving his dad and Sam Far a bad time. We're working it through Leon's tenure and then, and then Sam's. And now with Jimmy taking such a strong lead, and now Congresswoman Zolaufren is coming in behind us to help him. And all the help that John Laird's done for us there is critical. And I, I can't say enough about what Senator Laird's done in stepping in on the Watsonville Hospital that obviously impacts the north part of my county in Potro and Los Lomas. So I clearly support our agenda of items that we wish to have addressed. And we really appreciate the support of our elected officials. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next up, we've got Supervisor, see here, Chris Lopez in District 3.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to share, obviously, the priorities staff laid out in terms of water with the dams in San Lucas are critically important for the Third District. And I don't want to beat a dead horse. I'll just say that that's, that's where my heart is, especially with all the, all the needs in our rural communities like San Lucas. And so want to just reiterate that those are critically important. I have had the opportunity, opportunity over the last couple of days to have some really key meetings on other priorities, including wildfire with Randy Moore, the new chief of fire here in DC. And meeting him face to face to talk about the challenges we face in Monterey County, as well as the needs with the connection between District 5 and 3 over in Nassimeno Ferguson was very enlightening. And so we had some great back and forth, some great opportunities to share needs. And my, what made me most excited was everything I brought up, he already knew about. Thanks to our legislative team, thanks to, you know, Jimmy and everything he's been able to do. And Mary and their advocacy to lift the issue up. So, you know, being here with RCRC, we're continuing to push for the needs of rural Californians. But I've appreciated the opportunity to really push the needs for Monterey County. And specifically, some of those challenges that we see coming are the need to finish out our commitment on broadband. And we are doing some very exciting projects through County IT to light up the communities of San Lucas and San Ardo. But I will share that recently, we did have a big cut in the fiber that knocked our communities out for nearly 48 hours. And those redundancies are something that we've been talking about here and the need to make sure that that CPUC commitment to tie in long-term, all of our communities is built out so that we have those redundancies in place. But at the end of the day, I just want to give so much appreciation to every one of our legislators. As Supervisor Phillips said, every time we pick up the phone, we get a call back. We get, we have the relationships that I think lift us up as a region because we work together, because we listen to each other's voices and assist in pushing us in the same directions. And those directions are critically important for the residents who we know were critically impacted by COVID. And so as we move forward, the need for additional housing for our communities and all the different opportunities through infrastructure to make sure that that housing is done safely is something that I'll be looking to continue to push. And I hope that, that all of us as a community will, will push for those efforts to get the water in place, to build the low-income housing, because all these things tie into each other. But with that, Madam Chair, I'm going to keep my comments brief and turn it back to you. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Supervisor Lopez. I'm in District 4, so I'll hop next and then pass it over to Supervisor Adams. I just wanted to share a couple of things that we're working on in District 4 right now. But first of all, I just want to say I do appreciate the access that we all have to our legislators. It makes a difference and it does help us, I think, achieve our shared goals. I also want to give a shout out to our county staff who really do the, the real groundwork and legwork to move all these projects forward. We get to sit here and, and talk about it, but they're the ones doing the work. In District 4, we've been making a lot of progress, but we've got a lot more work to do in terms of blight removal of the old buildings that were left over from the Army. There's some, some projects underway, but there's a lot more that needs to happen. The Marina Health Clinic would be absolutely critical. Anyone that would like to come take a tour of that facility, we've got that listed in our budget asks, but it is a huge, huge need for the, the community to get a new health clinic. The work of Safe routes to school and the funding that's been made available, both for the planning and the implementation of those projects, has really been fundamentally important to improve the safety for pedestrians and our bicycle safety. And to make our, our streets safer for, for our kids and everyone who's, who's traveling. We've made some progress, and I think one of the things that I hear from my community is just the access to basic services like healthcare and food services. People need to be able to not have to have someone's phone number to be able to make the system and government work for them. And so anything that we're doing to expand access to healthcare, access to social services, really does directly benefit our district and county residents. I wanted to call out the water solutions that we have listed here. We don't have any specific to the peninsula, but there are some really big water challenges that we continue to grapple with. And it's not just the technical solutions and the funding for those technical solutions, but really trying to find the right way to bring the political and public will to consensus so that we can move forward with efficiency and expeditiously. I want to thank our state and federal partners for all of your support this past year with COVID response. Our federal folks, you know, you were the reason that we were able to get so much vaccine pulled in when we needed it. And why we were able to, I think, achieve the high vaccination rates that we do have here in Monterey County, which is not what you would expect to see in a county as rural as ours. But we are, we're taking advantage of every resource that you've made available and putting it, putting it to good use. I think you can be really proud of what we've been able to accomplish. The last thing I want to mention was the, also not on our, on our main list, but we do have some social service buildings that are, that are old. Desperately in need of repair and renovation, if not remodeling or demolition to rebuild. And that's what I am getting at when I talk about the, the more that we can just buy right, make these programs and systems work for our residents. The better able our community is to be successful and vibrant and healthy. So just wanted to say thank you again for all of the work that you're doing. We've got a lot going on here in Monterey County, and there's so much for you to be, to be proud of. And we look forward to continuing to tell you our stories and to show off our successes.
Thank you, Supervisor Askew. And again, as my colleagues have stated before me, thank you all so much for being here with us today and listening to us and, and sharing your insight into the things you've accomplished, as well as the things that you're looking forward to accomplishing. The legislators that we're fortunate to have representing us are stellar, as is their staff. And I think I've had the opportunity to work with just about every one of you, and it really is a treat to get to work with people who really know what they're doing and are so receptive to listening to us and helping us work through things because our problems in our county are myriad, they're varied, and they're quite difficult. I want to thank you for the opportunity to share my comments and my priorities. With the state's three strong budget, with the state's strong budget position this year and the new federal funding opportunities for infrastructure, we have a unique opportunity to make big strides in critical areas for Monterey County. As has been mentioned, we're still recovering from the economic impacts of the pandemic, especially in the hospitality industry. We are investing a significant portion of our American Rescue Plan Act dollars into supporting small businesses and our tourism economy. An important part of our recovery is the workforce. We all know that there are many businesses and organizations who are operating with just about 50% of their staff and therefore are unable to open for the hours they had previously been able to operate and therefore not able to make the economic recovery that they need to do. Access to affordable and excellent childcare is key to solving this problem and getting a full economic recovery in Monterey County. I sincerely hope that we, as the legislative leadership for Monterey County, will be able to work together to resolve this issue as quickly as possible. The wildfires and the flooding that District 5 residents have had to contend with in recent years are of great concern. We need to collaborate with the state to ensure emergency response resources are on hand and that we're prepared to deal with unforeseen disasters. An unforeseen disaster not dissimilar to the recent Colorado Fire, which started in January so early in the year. And it was really a very interesting and difficult circumstance, yet Cal Fire and the Big Sur Fire and Mid Valley Fire, Mid, sorry, Mid Coast Fire, all stepped up to the plate. There are others that I'm sure I've not mentioned who were there as well. But the thing that was so difficult about that is that January 3rd, all of the regular firefighters are laid off because that's not fire season. So when our fire broke out, we had to recruit captains and chiefs from all over the state to come and help us, and they were there for us. That's the sort of thing that we need to be prepared for. I think that's what we're going to see in the future with wildfires in California. Like so many other communities across the country, Monterey County has significant deferred maintenance in its critical infrastructure and facilities. This includes transportation and roads, water systems and parks. My priorities for our legislative efforts together are to maximize Monterey County's ability to bring in state and federal dollars to address our deferred maintenance needs and upgrade our infrastructure to be ready for many years to come. Top of mind for me in my district and on this side of the, of the county is water supply. There are issues unique to the Monterey Peninsula in my district. We need to be able to lift the state water board cease and desist order if we want to increase housing opportunities on the peninsula and meet our regional housing needs. And we need to successfully implement the groundwater sustainability plans and meet the requirements of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. Also, top of mind for me is funding for our county roads. I hope Monterey County can work with our congressman to secure the much-needed funding for our transportation systems. Of course, funding for water, transportation and childcare are all mandatory to facilitate affordable housing and resolve our homeless crisis. I thank you again for this annual workshop for joining us today. I thank you for listening to the issues that each of us has. They're not dissimilar to what you hear from the rest of your, of your areas that you're responsible for. But specific thanks to Charles McKee, to Annette Di Adamo, to, to Brent, excuse me, to Brent and to Ashley and to Supervisors Reed Askew and Supervisor Leho for all your combined efforts to bring forward such a strong legislative program on behalf of Monterey County. We're all very thankful. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Adams. All right, we are at 3:35. We want to get everyone wrapped up by 4 o'clock, but we do have some time for any questions from our, our legislative delegation about our priorities or about any of the priorities that the supervisors have shared. And open up the floor, or I will put it up as well to supervisors who might have questions or follow-up comments.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
I just wanted to add one brief comment that, that as we hear legislators, I think we've demonstrated with, with, with our county staff that we've been very supportive of their bills and their efforts. This is reciprocal. So even though we make our ask at the beginning of the year, as your bills move forward, I think we've, we've demonstrated that we're one of the most proactive counties in getting support letters out. So you know, your district is behind many of your great legislative endeavors. So I think that will continue this year. And so we're attentive and we appreciate your leadership on many issues for California. Thank you.
Absolutely. Supervisor Lopez.
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in and, and share, you know, as we move forward on a lot of the needed infrastructure improvements, specifically to roads and bridges, we heard big numbers. And I know that the, the money still technically has to flow from the feds, that the state programs need to be set up. So as those happen, we just hope, I want to ask our legislators, because I know they have in the past, to get in there and make sure that for our communities, communities that have long stretches of road in order to carry agricultural products to and from fields and to keep those farm workers safe on our roads, that we, I don't want to call them carve-outs, but that we pay attention to not just population, but need and perhaps trips, because for us, as we hear more about VMT, those impacts land harder on our rural communities. And so I know that last year Congressman Panetta carried the earmark for us on the South of Salinas project to help improve that particular corridor with the upgrade crossings across 101. But I know that there'll be additional impact to that particular intersection in the coming years. And so the need for us to find solutions for that intersection, but others throughout our county is critically important. And so I think the rulemaking is going to be critically important as all this stuff comes through, and we look forward to continuing to work with you. And we'll always be ready to answer phones on our end too, to help you craft things that work for, for our county. But I want to appreciate especially, some remember Rivas, who I see as still with us, who's been such a huge champion for our region. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'm going to go a little off script and Supervisor Adams.
Sure. Yes, I did see that the Assemblymember Rivas is still with us and as is Dominic. So perhaps if I answer, ask this question, either of you might be able to comment. And this is a more general question. I'm just wondering, as you sit in the, in the chairs that you have, knowing that you're going to be here and continuing, what do you think or what do you see are some of the most difficult issues that you're going to be facing in the coming legislative year?
Yes, Supervisor Adams, it's a great question, you know, and I think, you know, you heard a lot of that in the discussion this afternoon that was highlighted by Senator Laird, by Caviato, Mark Stone, and really our congressional reps. I think here in California, clearly COVID-19, it continues to be something that we need to monitor. But also so much turnover in the legislature currently, really unexpected. The number of open seats in both the Assembly and the Senate, so that certainly plays a factor into the work that we're going to be able to accomplish legislatively. But I think that the last couple of years, in addition to this unprecedented pandemic we've had to work through, is the unprecedented budget surplus that we've had to work with. And so it's really trying to work with this administration, identify areas where we can make these intentional investments throughout the state. And really for our region, working with the county of Monterey, identifying those issues and, and those projects. They're trying to establish some priorities. That's why this engagement is so important, you know, whether it's water infrastructure, as we've heard, whether it's around housing, the veterans home, you know, as we heard. All this is incredibly helpful. And so really, I think this is a huge year for our budget and to make these, you know, intentional investments that are going to have the, you know, the best impact and be the most beneficial for the people we represent. And so I think that's what you can expect from us is just, you know, a high level of engagement, because it's really just an evolving situation. The governor, who recently, he proposed his budget. But, but things can change. And so really looking towards, you know, the May revise and see how, you know, how much things will change. But, you know, it's a very fluid, evolving situation, but you have a, a group of legislators in this region that work very well together. And, you know, we're always largely on the same page to, you know, fight for those issues important to the county.
Thank you for your response. And I must say that I'm, with the shifting lines, as you've talked about, and the additional funding, I just wonder if there's an opportunity for looking at larger regional projects that we may not have thought of before. But with the new people who are representing more parts of Monterey County, perhaps we have a better opportunity to be able to accomplish some of the things that we want because we have a larger region than beyond our county, than our county, and perhaps there's some way that we can leverage that.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I think in the conversations I've had with Jimmy Panetta, we have a huge opportunity working with we have a huge opportunity working with what we expect to be our new member of Congress, Olafkin, who has, you know, seniority standing in Congress. But to really have her engage on issues important to the Salinas Valley, to the county of Monterey, issues around broadband, issues around agriculture, certainly, you know, ensuring that we all work together to get her acclimated to those issues. It will be a huge benefit for our region. And, you know, but you're absolutely right. I think especially around, I would say our state's most pressing problem, housing and homelessness. Having organized a statewide housing tour this past fall and winter with a number of my colleagues, I think when I experienced the engagement we had, you know, I saw firsthand why it's so challenging and controversial when it comes to housing policy in this incredibly diverse state of California, you know. It's diverse in many ways from our population to our geography. And so certainly trying to take a more regional approach to housing and homelessness. We have a huge opportunity and a lot of work to do when it comes to homelessness. Having authored legislation or a request for a joint audit of how we're spending our homeless dollars. The report was published about a year ago from the state auditor and it showed a large number of some deficiencies. We're investing a record number of state dollars to homelessness, but we're not making any progress. It's getting worse. And so what this audit showed is, it showed a number of opportunities to certainly do a lot more and to be more efficient and strategic with our dollars and how we're approaching homelessness, you know. And so certainly that requires, in my opinion, a very strong regional approach, as you're suggesting. And I think in our region, what we have seen throughout this pandemic, the collaboration, as I mentioned, of agriculture and local government has been phenomenal. And so certainly our region is in, you know, in a situation where we can mobilize quickly to, you know, really affect change in a lot of these areas.
Thank you so much. And I also thank you for bringing your delegation. I had the opportunity to meet with them, as you know, when you came through and you could just see their eyes lighting up as we talked and showed, as you did, showed them some of the issues that we face here. So thank you again. We're very fortunate to have your focus on our area. With that, I think it's been turned back over to me, if I believe that that's what that is you're handing me.
One final comment. I just want to again say a really big thank you and recognition to Annette Di Adamo. And Annette, I don't know if you want to say, just briefly say anything about your experience working with our county legislative program, but you really are the backbone that holds this program together. And we appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you Supervisors and thank you to all the legislative offices that have joined us today. I don't really have anything to add. You guys are the stars. Thank you for everyone for supporting Monterey County and our endeavors.
Great. And with that, I'll pass the microphone back over to Chair Adams to round us out.
Thank you so much. And I also noticed that we're fortunate to have our advocates still with us, Ashley Walker and Brent Heberly. And maybe I'll just see if you have a couple of comments that you wish to make in the, what you've heard from us today and what you see ahead for the future. And I'll start with Ashley since her microphone is off.
Thank you Supervisor Adams. I just want to say thank you to our members, our legislative members and their staff for the really open communication we've had, that you have provided in terms of our asks and requests. And as Supervisor Lejo mentioned, we absolutely want to reciprocate that and support your efforts this coming year. We know that there is a lot of pressure on you all with the budget negotiations. So moving forward, we really want to partner with you to make sure that the programmatic dollars and the requests that we have make sense for our region, whatever we can do to help support those efforts. We look forward to working with you this year. Thank you.
Thank you Ashley and Brent.
Yeah, not much to add, other than, you know, I think this is going to be a really great year to really show how our advocacy team will work kind of in an integrated way with the infrastructure bill in particular, at the federal level, at the state level and at the local level. I mean, this is kind of the, in a good way, the perfect storm for us to all kind of work as a team to really, you know, bring home the funding that's going to make a difference to the county. So looking forward to it.
Thank you Brent. I'll be looking for those checks. Thank you so much. And now we go to the public to see if there's any member of the public that would like to comment on today's activities. And I see that we have one hand raised at this point. We also have someone approaching the mic, so I will go to Mr. John Bailey, who's president at the podium here in the chambers. So if you're online, you can enable star nine to raise your hand.
On or not. Good afternoon Chair Adams and.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt. Did you indicate how much time each speaker will have?
Yeah, two to three minutes. It was in the agenda.
Minute thirty, two minutes.
We'll do a minute thirty.
I'll be quick.
Okay, thank you. One minute thirty seconds. Thank you, Council.
The 320, I'm John Bailey, Chair of the Monterey County Water Resource Agency. The 312 million that we have in our agenda or our ask is a modest amount. In reality, I'm more reality based than most. And in today's times, and by the time we get it built, we're probably looking at 500 million. And that's probably a more realistic number than what we have right now. In today's fiscal times and the way the future looks, things are going to cost us more. So to do all these projects, $500 million is, I think, within reach of what we should be asking for. 300 would be a great starting point, but we need more. These projects are crucial to not only to tourism, but agriculture. And if we don't have water, that's where everything starts. And without, as we make cuts, everything else will be cut. And with tourism bringing in $4 billion, $5 billion a year and agriculture, you know, supplies, $8 billion, we need to keep those two industries supplied with water. So I appreciate the time and thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bailey. Next, I will go to Mayor Mike LaBar.
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to express my great appreciation to the board and all of our representatives for this conversation today. I just really believe this highlights one of the greatest strengths of Monterey County is that we all work together as a team. And when there's a problem, I've always found that we come together and we fix it. So thank you Chair, and again, great appreciation to all that participated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Always great to hear your comments. And next we have George Fontes.
Good afternoon Chair Adams and honorable supervisors. I'm George Fontes, representing the Salinas Basin Water Alliance. The alliance members include agricultural businesses and families that own or farm more than 80,000 irrigated acres in the Salinas Valley. We have a significant interest in the long-term sustainability of water supplies in the Salinas Valley and support the integrated and equitable management of this critical resource basin wide. We support the $312 million budget request for water projects and I encourage you to read our more detailed letter of support we submitted earlier today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fontes. Again, I will state that if you wish to make a comment, you can please press star nine on your phone, which would enable you to raise your hand. At this point, I'm not seeing any additional hands raised, nor do I see anyone else in the audience who wishes to come and make a comment. Okay, thank you so much. One last call for the public. Thank you so much. I very much appreciate the comments that we were able to receive today and very much appreciate the public's participation in one of the most important things that we do in our county when it comes to governance. With that, I think that we are getting close to the end. And once again, I simply want to thank all of the legislators who were with us today, the Board of Supervisors, the department participants, and especially our legislative team. I look forward to being able to continue to work with you in the future on these very important issues that have been brought forward today. I know there was something on my calendar that said provide direction to staff. And I'm sitting here asking myself, hmm, the only direction that I think we could provide to staff is just please keep up doing the great work that you already are doing. So with that, I will thank you so much and adjourn today's special meeting. Thank you.